All right, I'd like to call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council meeting for October 9th, 2018. At this time, join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. We do have sign-up sheets. I got handed the first sheet. If you failed to sign up, just make sure if you want to speak, you sign up. You get time at the podium. The green light will get you started, and then the yellow light will tell you you've just got a minute left or a few seconds left, and the red light, time's up. So please obey the time. We've got quite a few signed up tonight. With that said, a couple of things going on. The city, I think, is positive. Been inside the Bristol Hotel here recently. I think I got toured a couple of rooms. They're really nice. The staff is very cordial. The restaurant is good. Ate lunch there. So if you hadn't been down to the new hotel, please visit. It's a really nice atmosphere. Sessions Hotel, I think, is starting to do some more demolition. Looks like windows are coming out. So another hotel should be going up for construction and finishing up soon. Euclid Avenue Shopping Center is moving. So if you haven't been down on Euclid Avenue across from Food City, a lot of stuff going on there. So it looks like it's coming along quite a bit. And American Merchant has started doing some work on the waste treatment side, and the roof is being worked on. So they're moving forward to start being ready for equipment to arrive later this year, early next year. So a lot of economic activity. So that's a good sign for the city. It's been a long time since we've had to talk about three or four things going on simultaneously that's going to add some good economic activity for the city. So with that said, we want to keep the city smiling, business-friendly, business doors open, telling folks that if you want to come here and invest, we're all here to support you. Just let us know what you need, and we'll be cordial and let you know how to go about doing what you need to do for the city's permit process to get business started. So with that said, any other council members want to comment? Okay, City Manager?
I am just going to applaud my thunder, Mayor, but I will say that all those things you've said are true. Things are moving forward at a relatively rapid pace. We've had, I've had numerous phone calls within the past two to three weeks from across the nation, people reaching out, inquiring about the city of Bristol, Virginia, as to what Bristol has to offer and what we can do for them. A lot of it is preliminary phone calls from people, but at least people are taking note of Bristol and considering Bristol when they're looking for new projects. So that is a positive thing. And with that being said, a lot of these positive things cannot happen without the team that we have in place. It takes more than just one person or a council. It takes an entire team and staff to make the city attractive to businesses and people. So I commend my staff for everything that they do, because none of this is possible without them, and they really do a good job. So I do appreciate what they do. And then I want to bring recognition, I don't think Sally's here tonight, but Bart is here too, but they won a national award for State Street, I forget the, State?
Grape Street.
Grape Street. It's a national award for planning, and they picked that award up two weeks ago tonight, I guess, in Washington, DC. And really proud of all the work they did for that, something they should be proud of, and something everyone in our community should be proud of as well. There'll be a celebration October the 16th on State Street at 6:00 PM. We encourage everyone to come out and celebrate that victory for Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee, that night.
All right. With that said, we'll go ahead into next item, which is matters to be presented, non-agenda by the public. So we've got a sign-up sheet here for people who've signed up for this items. First, we'll start with William Reed.
My name is William Reed. I'm a resident of Bristol, Virginia. 334 Moore Street is my address. I've lived in this city almost 27 years. I'm pastor of the New Hope Baptist Church over on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, here also in the city of Bristol, Virginia. I have a rather unique interest, and that is concerning the family resort. I'm not pro-gambling whatsoever. I'd be lying if I tell you that. However, I see the potential that this venue have for this city in terms of employment and what is going to, in my opinion, I think it would be a great thing for us to consider. I passed it for 49 years. I'm very confident in my salvation, and I'm very confident in my eternal destiny. But to whom much is given, much is required. We have the ability here to buy alcohol. We have the ability here to play the lottery. But it comes down ultimately to us being responsible adults who will have to be accountable and held accountable for our actions and what we do. We have to remember, all choices have consequences. So I'm hoping that my ecclesiastical constituency will hopefully be able to perhaps get with the people who are doing this, and perhaps maybe we can sit down together. And look, I hear a lot of casino, casino, but I'm not hearing very much family resort. So maybe we can sit down and see what they are offering, what this will bring to the city. I pastor church, and I don't mind telling you, when I come here, almost 27 years ago, my salary was $125 a week, and I commuted twice a week from Knoxville, Tennessee. I haven't become a millionaire yet. I don't see that happening. However, I've raised three of my children. They're all going to better areas to make a living. I've raised five out of six grandchildren. They're going to other areas to make a living. And I'd like to, for Bristol to be able to be a magnet that, as the city attorney was saying, could draw people here. And that's my interest tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next person, Nikki Eddy. Is that right?
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to come here tonight to express my interest and positive thoughts towards the casino and everything that it could bring to the area as far as jobs and hopefully more resources, and to tell you what a good job I think you're doing on that. So that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, and the distinguished Archie Hubbard.
Good evening, gentlemen. And I'd just first like to say it's more fun to be on this side of the lectern than it is on that side. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the casino. When I first heard about it, I wasn't too impressed, because I was afraid out-of-town ownership was going to lead to all kinds of trouble. But once I found out that Jim McGoughlin was behind it, I was 100% for it. I've known him ever since he's moved to town. I've never known him to do anything illegal. I'm totally impressed with everything he does, is first-class, or he doesn't do it at all. So he knows what he's doing. If he thinks this thing can work, I think it can work. They're talking in terms of $150 million investment. If only half of it is real estate taxable, that's over $1,006,000 every year before they even deal the first card. So they're not playing around. They know what they're doing, and they've got the money to do it, and they don't need our help except to stay out of their way. Thank you.
Thank you, Archie. Sandra Fritz?
First of all, this is something I hate to do, is to stand up in front of people and talk. But I am a resident of Bristol, Virginia, and I am for the casino and all that it can bring to our area. I think that it would be a bonus to the employees and the residents of the town. I'm tired of hearing what we're not doing, what we don't have the money to do, and the attitude that goes with it. I think this would bring much-needed pay increases for the employees and the teachers. We have a city of, I think it's about 135 square miles. We have a little over 17,000 people. We have 7,600-plus households and 78 churches in Bristol, Virginia, as best I could research. We have a median income for males of about $28,000. The females, right at $21,000. And per capita, it runs about $17,000. These are probably numbers you are already aware of. 13.2% of our families are below the poverty line. The jobs that this casino would bring in with the wages that I've seen quoted are very, very much needed in this area. Our senior citizens can't afford any more tax increases on their real estate. They're living on fixed incomes, and there's quite a few of us. This project will bring dollars to Bristol to support the city, the schools, and the 75-plus churches in the town, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Karen, is it Mears?
Yes. I'll probably cover a few things that we've already heard, but they're concerns of mine. I've lived in this area since 1980 in Bristol, Virginia, and what I have seen over the years and what we're living in right now, these are some of the issues I see. We need financial accessibility. What is available to our community financially at this point? We are going bankrupt. We're going bankrupt. We need monies. Our problems, tax increases, this really affects me personally. I had a 34% increase in my tax assessment over the last two years. In doing research, according to the United States Federal Housing Finance Agency, who reports the United States Federal Price Index, the change for Virginia's zip code 24201 from 2013 to 2015 was a minus 2.19% decrease, and I had a 34% increase in my property taxes. What will happen to our taxes next? Fixed-income residents can't sustain this and maintain their property too. Beautiful Bristol is leaving us. By the way, should schools and churches participate in this tax situation? You might read Matthew 22, verse 21. The landfill, this is the problem, as everyone is aware. How long can we continue with the expense for that maintenance? Roads, money is needed for their improvement and future development. Look at Exit 5. Safe walkways, more people are walking, and they need access from the downtown area to Exits 5 and 7, especially if we acquire business in the now vacant Exit 7 buildings. Reduction in the number of city employees. I remember there was discussion about downsizing the police department, the fire department. EMS and trash pickup, because we can't cover the expense. Can we afford to let this happen, or for it to be outsourced to Tennessee? The new hotels, a beautiful thing, keeping Bristol beautiful. These hotels need to be filled, and not just during major events like the races, Rhythm and Roots, and college football games at the raceway, or will they soon be sitting vacant like the many stores in area strip malls? The homeless and prostitution is a problem, has been a problem, and may always be a problem. Will the casino provide a possibility for favorable change for these people and welfare recipients? Decreasing population, we do have that problem in Bristol, Virginia. Young people are going elsewhere for employment, and that filters down to schools, housing, retail, recreation, and all other community services. Our income funds are diminishing. Will a casino draw people and industry and bring in money? Are we afraid of the casino, that it will corrupt our city? We already have the lottery, and we have had crimes committed by white collar.
Name your times up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Walter Fritz?
I'll make it short. I could have given her some of my time. I just noticed that Bristol is really growing in the last few years. There's a lot of new building going up and everything, but it breaks my heart to look around and see all these old buildings that are not being used for anything anymore. And I was glad to see the Ball Building bought out for American Textiles, and it would tickle me to see them all being used for something besides just an open warehouse area or whatever it is. And I hope we can continue to get something like this casino and things like that. I'd like to see Bristol moving forward. And if that helps the tax base, if it helps people's wages, I'm all for that, too. I don't see a downside to it. Thank you for your time.
Elaine Griffin?
Hello, my name is Elaine Griffin, and my husband and I have lived in Bristol, Virginia the past 22 years. We are in favor of the casino. Today, I read seven or eight articles about studies of casinos and the effect they may or may not have on crime in the neighborhoods and the localities near the casino. Frankly, I was a little bit surprised. The overwhelming majority of these articles I read concluded that casinos had no significant effect on increasing crime. And in fact, one study, and in one study, casinos had a positive influence in overall decrease in crime. That's it.
Thank you. Rene Hunt?
Hello, my name is Renee Scout Hunt. I've been a resident all my life, so I'm going to say over 50 years. I'm not telling you how old. And I just wanted to basically come up and say how much support that my entire family, who lives in Bristol, Virginia, and there's a lot of us, are in support of this casino for the jobs. So many people, as Reverend Reed had stated, is leaving. There's nothing. I'm glad to see the merchant open up at the old mall, but so many is leaving. We need this. We need to keep families staying here that have jobs, that can get jobs out there. And I just wanted to say that my family backs me in saying that we are in total support of the casino. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wagner Hills?
Thank you, gentlemen. It's my understanding that most of you have been made aware of our situation. I'm with Wagner Hills Homeowners Association. As far as, we have a couple of busted water lines that are before the meters, and we're trying to get BVU to help us out, and they're refusing to cooperate. And I'm here just to enlist your help, I guess. To use a David versus Goliath analogy, we need some help. And I assume, you know, I think you guys would have a little more clout with them than we do.
Yeah, we'll address that just in a second, once we're done. We'll talk about what we're doing.
Okay.
Yep. And Nancy, were you wanting to speak at the?
Yes, please, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, this is non-agenda. Are you want to speak at agenda item or non-agenda? Do you want to speak on non-agenda items or a particular item?
I think it's non-agenda. I'm not sure.
You don't sound like you're feeling good.
I don't, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I pay tax. I live in Bristol, Virginia. For the past three years, I watched the council wage one of the most dramatic, difficult, literally battles I have ever seen waged. And that battle was raised by a group of men, it happened to be men, I was closely associated one way or another, to save this city. That is literally what you all did, not you all. That's literally what that council did, was save this city. Now, the thing that is concerned, one of the things that is concerning me tonight, I think I see a trend that is a very dangerous, a very undesirable trend, happening among this council, I'll say the council and the other officials. And that is, I hope you are not leading this city back into the Keystone Cops Act II. Now Keystone Cops is my name for them. That's my personal name. The Keystone Cops are the ones who led us into this incredibly horrible situation financially. Now, one of the things that I have noticed is, I think that you all are beginning to rely on false assumptions to make your decisions, on invalid, false assumptions. Now let me tell you what false assumptions have already gotten us. The landfill, it has cost us millions of dollars, millions of dollars, false assumptions. The Clear Creek Development, millions of dollars, false assumptions. The division between BVU and the city of Bristol, Virginia, millions of dollars, jail time, horrible things, false assumptions. There are others, gentlemen. The Rock Pile up here, oh my goodness, false assumptions. Please do not let this happen. You are thinking at an immature level, elementary level. You need to put on your big-boy paints, grow up, and look at these things with maturity like the other council did. They laid the groundwork. All we lack is one bad step, and we will be right back where we were. Don't let it happen. We need a little more time, just a little more time, and then we'll know what step to take and what direction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, with that, that's the end of the people that signed up for. Oh, go, one more sign up. You want to speak?
Hello, I'm Jackie Knopflin, pastor of Household Faith Community Church. I too am a resident of Bristol, Virginia, owner of homes and land, and I too love my city. Amen very much. I love you councilmen, and I love the directions that we're going, except for these two issues that I have. I'm still concerned about the school system, about taking our inner-city schools, our low-income students, and moving them all the way up to Exit 7, and then we're talking about a casino. Johnson City still has their mall. Kingsport still has their mall. The reason why Bristol doesn't have their mall is because everyone went to go shop there in Johnson City and Kingsport. If we get a casino here, I say two years, it'll look prosperous. And then Johnson City and Kingsport City Council will come up with one more elaborate, and everyone will go running down to Johnson City and Kingsport, and it'll look just like it looks now over there where the mall is. And I too, like Ms. Nancy said, we have to be smart. Yes, we need jobs in this town. Yes, we need money and finances and so forth in this town. But we really have to think how we're going to get that done. Are we going to do anything to get finances here? Are we going to just really sell out and do anything that looks like it's going to be prosperous and get us out of the hole that we're in? Or are we going to really search and look for businesses and opportunities to put over there in that spot, fix our schools up with the money that we have to the state of the art, and keep this system going? Let's don't be like everyone else. Let's don't build schools, a one great big school, and stock everyone in it like that. Let's keep what we have. Thank you for listening. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right, City Managers, you want to make some comments on some of the things that were said?
Sure. In regards to the Wagner Hill situation, there you are. I did speak with Don Bowman today, and I also spoke with the civil engineer that handles all the wastewater and water, Philip King. They are working on a solution. I actually just spoke with Mr. King at about 10 minutes to 6:00. So they are working on a solution. I think one of those two will be in contact with you very shortly in order to address that issue. I know they're having, based on the conversation I just had 20 minutes ago, they are looking at plans to determine exactly where the water lines are, whose property they're on, and how to go about fixing that. So they are working on that right now. I think that's all I need to say right now.
Okay. Yeah, just a couple of comments. I heard a lot there during the non-agenda, but just a couple of things. One, the school system. Just want to make sure everybody understands, we are doing a lot of due diligence on the school system. This council, specifically myself, you know, I'm not there yet, you know, and I think the superintendent knows that. So we are studying it from all angles. I do have the same concern about putting all the students in one location, but I have a bigger concern about the financial side. You know, like Ms. Marney said, one step backwards, we can find ourselves back in a, you know, another predicament. And so timing is everything on a major capital project like that. So you can look at it as, you know, budget-neutral, whatever you want to call, but it's still a fairly large financial outlay, and you've got to be really, really careful when you do that, because we can't wind up miscalculating the financial side and think that it was really a good project, and it turns out that it's got more hidden costs than we anticipated. So we've got to study it, and we've got lots, lots more talking to do. So we've met multiple times. We've got more meetings set up to go through the details and start to ask all the hard questions, understand what we should do. And I think Davenport is doing some financial analysis for us, so we've asked, you know, his expertise to look at this really carefully for us. The other thing, the mall. Whether it be the mall, or the family resort, or the casino, or whether it be Park Ventures, or whether it be Euclid Avenue Shopping Center, I think a lot of people get the misconception that the city somehow makes a decision of who these private investors are and what they do and they don't do. And really, the city, the city doesn't really have a say in where these private investors, you know, put their money in the projects, because they own the property. It's privately held. It's their own private investment. But what we do do, and I think the city needs to understand this, we do ask a lot of hard questions. We don't take the projects just on the surface, and we look them in the eye, and we want to understand who they are and why they want to do this, and is it being done for the right reasons? Are they thinking of all the positives as well as all the negatives that could come out of a project? And we have a responsibility to do that, and to make sure that they are responsible in what they're doing in the city. And so like Mr. Hubbard said, you know, I told this group right off the shoot, I would not be for the casino if I didn't personally know the group behind this. They do things right. They are very good business folks. But that still does- But that still doesn't mean there's not lots of holes that you could step in along the way. So we still got to make sure we ask the right questions, we guide the project properly, we, if things seem to be getting awry, we talk to them and make sure our concerns are voiced very specifically on, on what the concerns are. And I think if you do that right, and you work together closely, city versus investors versus business people, at the end of the day, most, most projects turn out for the good, because you've, you've worked a, a give and take while you've let the project unfold. And I think, knowing me and knowing Randy, if the project ever gets to the point where we are uncomfortable, that it's not the right thing for the city, we will figure out a way to put the brakes on it. We're not, we're not going to do something wrong for the city. That is absolutely not in our DNA. So with that said, you're just going to have to have confidence that, that we are listening, and we're asking the same questions you're asking. And I think we're not happy with taxes, um, property taxes, the assessment. I think there was a major discussion here in these chambers when we found out that there was a new appraisal firm that came forward to appraise city properties. That was not, that was not a very good night. I wasn't happy at all. And I asked questions like, who selected the firm? Why did they select it? Did we know anything about this firm? Where do they do their assessments? How have they done them in the past? Well, we found out kind of after the fact of all the problems that that, you know, assessment cycle did for the city, and you're right, some went way up, some went way down, and at the end of the day, it, it, there was lots of problems with that assessment, in my opinion. So we got to be careful, and this is a message to the Commissioner of Revenue. You know, people watch, and, and you got the responsibility to do even assessments right for the city. And so, let's, let's make sure that this next assessment cycle, which happens every four years, is done much better than this last one, uh, because that's what drove the tax rate up, or changed the tax rate. Now, we as a council, before we got elected, and I, I don't know if Archie was up here, but you know, the tax rates went up so we could save money and put the city in a better financial position. So, real estate taxes went up for a specific reason, and it was to put the reserve fund, the money we saved, into a better location. And we've done that. I think, hats off to Archie Hubbard, I mean, he drove that. So, we're sitting here today, almost knocking on the door of the, of the percent of our base budget of what we need to have set aside, that's reserve funds, just like a savings account, that we don't touch for any reason. It's there in case something happens, we're not anticipating, and we can still pay the light bills, pay the staff, pay the city operating expenses, and we don't get into a position of having to borrow short-term monies to do that. We are never going to go back there, I promise you, not as long as we're sitting there. So, what we're trying to do now is grow that account that we don't have funds in, which are our capital accounts. We've never in this city's history put money aside for things we know we need, like new police cars, like new fire trucks, like things the city has to have, trash trucks. We've never planned that far ahead. We're starting to plan for that. We're starting to figure out a way now to set money aside, put accounts specifically assigned to those type assets, so we have money already there. It's already earmarked for those projects. So, I take that and just take the time to tell you that, so we're, we're thinking about how we continue to put the financial position of the city in a better, in a better place. All right, with that said, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Before I do that, is there any, um, other comments from council, or a change in the agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to make a motion to table line item six.
I'd second that.
Line item six, a discussion on charter changes?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Wingard, second by Mr. Osborne, to table item six in the formal agenda. Any other changes?
I believe that's it for my part.
Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, now moving on to item one, consider a public hearing regarding an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way New Hope Baptist Church in the city of Bristol. I hereby open the hearing. Staff report.
Okay, uh, New Hope Baptist Church at 905 Martin Luther King Boulevard, Junior, or Junior Boulevard, wants to vacate the right-of-way shown in yellow there on the, on the sketch. They own the property on both sides, um, and it's been submitted to the departments within the city, and BVU and other utilities. Nobody has any objections, and so we recommend to vacate that right-of-way.
Okay, no one signed up for public comment on this item. So hereby close the hearing. So item two, consider first reading of an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way New Hope Baptist Church in the city of Bristol by caption only. And did our city manager vacate the premises?
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, so we closed the hearing, and now we're on to staff report for item two, consider the first reading of the ordinance, caption only.
Ordinance to vacate a portion of an improved public right-of-way of an unnamed alley. Was it captioned on?
Yes. Caption on.
Oh, staff report, sorry. You already did that? You've already done the staff report? We've closed the hearing.
We closed the hearing.
Okay, the staff report would be basically the same as what was in the public hearing, right?
There wasn't anybody signed up for public comment. So is there any, um, pleasure council here on this item?
I, I make a motion that we have first reading, first reading of the ordinance. I guess by caption only.
All right, so, Mr. Hartley makes a motion for caption only of the first reading of the ordinance, second by Mr. Osborne. Any discussion?
I, I have one question for either Mr. McCullough or Mr. Reed. I can't see what's under the yellow. Is that right-of-way? Is that basically, are they parking lot, or what, what is in that space right now?
It's just vacant land. There's nothing really.
Well, because I can kind of see the parking in the green, and I know the church building's on the other lot. I just didn't know what was actually in the right-of-way, just...
Can you pull up the area?
I think Mr. Reed could answer that question, once. I was just curious.
Oh, sure, yep.
Uh, the part in yellow you see there is actually the right way of circling around behind the back of the church, and comes out to the downside next to the building that you see, which is the, uh, Lighthouse Supply Company. Uh, it kind of goes between the two, uh, buildings.
Okay.
Uh, and usually we keep that open. We try not to park there. We'll keep it open for emergencies.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, got a motion, Mr. Hartley, second by Mr. Osborne. Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. Reading by caption only?
Ordinance to vacate a portion of an improved public right-of-way of an unnamed alley.
All right, item three, consider a second reading and adoption of an ordinance to vacate all of the certain public right-of-way Wagner Alley in the city of Bristol by caption only. Staff report.
Can you put the sketch up? Again, it's just a, a repeat from the previous council meeting, that area in yellow is just to vacate the church. There owns the property, all surrounding that piece of alleyway there, and there was no objection to, um, from any utilities or with any city, city departments for the vacation.
Okay. No one has signed up for this item for public comment, so it was pleasure council.
I make the motion, we have the second reading of the ordinance, vacate the alley by caption only.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Hartley, for, uh, adopting the second reading by caption only. Second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Ordinance to vacate a portion of an improved public right-of-way of Wagner Alley.
Okay, now we need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move that we adopt the ordinance. Second.
Okay, motion, Mr. Hartley, second by Mr. Osborne, to adopt the ordinance. Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, item four, consider a second reading and adoption of an ordinance to approve zoning map amendment application oh one dash two oh one eight to rezone tax map one ninety dash four dash one, a five-point-four acre portion of the former tax map one ninety dash A dash six A, from R one, single-family residential, to B three, intermediate business, by caption only. Staff report.
Uh, council, this is a piece of property that's located off Stagecoach Road. There's been several, uh, previous relevant action items on this parcel of property. Uh, on July sixteenth, the planning commission approved the division of five-point-four acres from the original thirty-eight acres of the Dishman property. On August the fourteenth, council approved that division. On August the twentieth, the planning commission voted for the application, uh, for a joint public hearing. On September the eleventh, a joint public hearing was held to hear comments on the application. On September seventeenth, the planning commission voted five-o, with two members absent, to recommend the rezoning application to city council. And then at our last meeting on September the twenty-fifth, the city council approved the first reading of the ordinance to approve zoning map amendment number zero one hyphen two thousand eighteen. At this time, staff recommends the approval of the zoning map amendment zero one hyphen two thousand eighteen.
All right, any, no one signed up for public comment, so what was the pleasure council?
I move to approve the second reading, caption only.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Wingard, second by Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. Reading of the ordinance, caption only?
An ordinance by the city council of Bristol, Virginia, approving the request by Clarence Dishman to amend the city zoning map from single-family residential R one to intermediate business B three for property described as map parcel number one nine zero hyphen four hyphen one, a five-point-four acre portion of former map parcel number one nine zero hyphen A hyphen six A, located on Stagecoach Road.
All right, I need a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion, Mr. Wingard, second by Mr. Osborne. Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, item five, consider resolution in support of school funding bill. Staff report.
Counsel, this is a, uh, resolution in support of a school funding bill that has been proposed by Senator Bill Stanley of Franklin County. He has submitted a bill to provide school division access to state funds to address their capital needs. A resolution in support of this bill was passed by the Bristol, Virginia School Board on October the first of two thousand eighteen. And I would recommend that the council, uh, support this resolution.
All right, no one signed up for public comment. Would you like to read the proclamation?
Sure. A resolution of support, whereas the Constitution of Virginia requires that the General Assembly shall provide for a system of free public elementary and secondary schools for all children of school age throughout the Commonwealth, and shall seek to ensure that an educational program of high quality is established and continually maintained. And whereas high-quality public schools provide the critical foundation of knowledge that is required for a student to become a successful and productive member of a community. And whereas in the United States, the average age of school facilities is forty-four years old, according to the Roanoke Times, and whereas in Bristol, Virginia, the average age of school facilities is sixty-eight years old, whereas three of the six city Bristol, Virginia schools were built before nineteen forty-nine, and whereas five of the six city, city of Bristol, Virginia schools were built before nineteen sixty-nine, and whereas Highland View Elementary was deemed functionally obsolete in two thousand eleven, and whereas Washington Lee and Stonewall Jackson Elementary Schools are handicap inaccessible, do not meet current code or safety requirements, and are approaching end of life, and whereas public schools throughout southwest Virginia are showing significant signs of age and deterioration to the point where the ability to provide high-quality educational programs is becoming significantly affected, and whereas many of these schools do not contain the equipment and/or systems to support collaborative and creative learning that are a must in a twenty-first century world, and whereas a two thousand thirteen Virginia study indicated the cost of modernized schools across the state was estimated at fifteen billion dollars. And whereas renovating older building is much more expensive than the cost of new construction, meaning local school boards in southwest Virginia do not have the capacity to afford renovation costs, nor do these boards have the legal authority to generate revenue, and whereas state Senator Bill Stanley has proposed the issuance of a statewide bond referendum whereby the proceeds would support the replacement, rehabilitation, and/or renovation of aging public school facilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bristol, Virginia City Council formally offers its support to Senator Stanley's proposal, and encourages the General Assembly to hold a statewide bond referendum using the revenue generated to renovate and modernize aging school facilities. Signed this the ninth day of October two thousand and eighteen.
All right, do I have a motion and a second by council?
I move to approve.
Okay, motion, Mr. Osborne?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Hartley. Any discussion?
I would just say, regardless of, uh, whatever means, whether it be through PPA process or renovating existing schools, or whatever, uh, you know, clearly assistance from the state for localities, not just Bristol, but, but other rural localities, localities in southwest Virginia, is what's going to help a lot of these schools, um, get, get the renovations they need. I mean, it, it's something that the localities, as, as we sit here and have our discussions about what to do, it's clear that, you know, assistance from the state, uh, will help, uh, regardless. So, uh, I don't know what the General Assembly will do, but I encourage them to, uh, this is an area where they can help a lot of localities and children at the same time.
Any other discussion? And I will say that I think, uh, I think the school, um, it's been a while since the state has recognized what their role is in supporting schools and financial support of schools. Um, you know, it's back to what's the purpose of government? Well, one of the, one of the key things, the purpose of the state government, is, is to support not only state law enforcement, but the state funding of schools. Um, if it wasn't for state funding of schools, then you can just imagine what the state of the education system would be. So, they've had a lot of laws they've passed over the last couple decades that we would all say are probably unfunded mandates, you know, got to do this, got to do that, standardized testing, other things, that really there was no financial means to support a lot of those, um, things that they pass. So I'm glad to see that the state's finally, um, recognizing and going to put a bond referendum out to try to raise additional monies, to, to allow the municipalities to have funds to, to support construction, because it's, uh, it's not getting cheaper. It's getting more expensive to build and, and do things in the schools, so, so I, I support this a hundred percent. All right, with that said, uh, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, we tabled item seven.
Six.
Oh, C six, I'm sorry. Item seven, consider closed session pursuant to two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A six, discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made publicly, public initially, the financial interest of the government unit would be adversely affected or proprietary. Need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
I move that we enter into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Hartley, second by Mr. Osborne. Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. Okay, by roll call vote, council members certify the only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Moonpower.
Yes.
All right, next we're on to the consent agenda. What's the motion of council or pleasure council? I'm going to have to abstain from the 20 September minute, so we can do everything but that one and we can vote on that one.
Okay, then I would move that we approve items 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, and 8.5, and vote on 8.1 separately.
And I have a question about 8.4.
Okay, why don't we just go down one at a time then?
I just need to, I just need to know on 8.4, is that non-budgeted money?
It's over from the prior year to that line item to cover that expense.
Okay, so it was budgeted.
By supplemental appropriation.
Is it just because we hit the threshold? Is that why it's on the consent agenda?
Yes, yes. It's because it's over 15 pounds.
Yeah, okay. So again, a move, we approve items 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, and 8.5, and then we'll consider 8.1 separately.
A second.
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Hartley, to consider 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, and 8.1 separately, and a second by Mr. Osborne. Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Moonpower.
Yes.
All right, 8.1.
A move that we consider or approve the minutes there under 8.1.
Two seconds.
Second.
Got a second. Motion, Mr. Hartley, second by Mr. Wingard, to approve both, both minutes. Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Moonpower.
Abstain.
All right, that's the last item. With that, we adjourn.